I'll open the select board meeting at five oh six P M. Trevor, can you read?
Yep. Welcome to the town of Deerfield meeting, the Select Board Board of Health Sewer Commissioners, March thirteenth, twenty twenty four at five oh five P M. This meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation. Please note that while option for remote attendance and or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The meeting will be held in person in the main meeting room of the Deerfield Municipal Offices in accordance with the Mass General Law Chapter thirty eight. Anyone intending to record the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk, me, Trevor McDaniel, and provide their name and address for the record. If you'd like to call in, the toll-free number is eight three three five four eight oh two seven six. The meeting ID is nine one one six oh four one five eight oh. The passcode is five seven zero zero one two. And on the agenda, which is on our calendar, on the town of Deerfield website, you will see a Zoom link where you can just click on and attend by Zoom. Meeting attendees should mute their phones, star six for landline, or if you're on Zoom, mute unless you're speaking. And wait until all others are, you know, wait until a person before you is done speaking before you speak. And state your name and address, or state your name. So-called meeting to order. Public comment. Do you want to take a public comment?
Yeah, I see that Fran's here, but usually Fran just visits us. And Fran, do you have any public comment?
No, I don't at this time. Thanks.
Fran.
Okay.
And then so Jessica, you have an opportunity to tell us about your petition. And we'll think about opening up our warrant. How's that?
Thank you. I didn't know I was going to get to speak very much tonight. So I'm Jessica Corwin. I'm the Chair of the Sunderland School Committee. I'm actually not a Deerfield resident, but I am working with a group of Frontier students, including Deerfield residents and their parents, who share an interest in lowering the municipal voting age to sixteen, which has already been done in Cambridge and Brookline. There are some other municipalities around the state, including Northampton, Boston, Southborough, I believe Lexington is about to do it, who have sort of passed it at their municipal level, but requires an action of the state legislature legislature to complete and enact. So there there's a national movement to enfranchise sixteen and seventeen year olds. And if the state legislature agrees, we could have sixteen and seventeen year olds in the Union Thirty Eight towns vote in our in our municipal elections only. It would not affect state elections or federal elections. It would not allow them to run for office because under the age of eighteen, you can't sign a legally binding contract. My interest in this as an educator and a school committee member is to to help our young people learn to engage this way in their communities. And my hope is that if we can introduce them to town elections and town annual meeting, you know, while they're still in the the safety and security of their public high school experience, that they will become lifelong voters, that they will run for office themselves. And they will engage in all of these things. I'm not particularly looking to change the outcomes of any elections. So we are submitting citizen petitions. We've already submitted them now in Deerfield and Sunderland. We're working on the one for Conway, one's for Conway and Wheatley. I I realize that we turned it in later than would be expected for Deerfield, and maybe it's not possible to accommodate it on the annual town meeting this spring. It would be totally fine to hold it for a future town meeting. Yeah, we understand that's your process. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
I I had that one question. You had talked about you're doing this in conjunction with actual classwork and civil government participation. And so could you just explain that a little bit? Because that's the thing that got me pretty excited about this.
Oh, yeah, me too. So I I'm I I'm working with Laura Moore, who's the A P Government Teacher at Frontier. She, because of her her school position, she's not allowed to like recruit kids to do this very political action, but she's very interested in having more students be able to vote. And she and I have talked about potentially running sort of an annual workshop, you know, that is available to students who are voting for the first time, but any community members who want to know, you know, how do you register to vote? Is it hard to vote? What are these town offices? What does the Board of Assessors do? And what is the annual town meeting? You know, what's going to happen so that we can welcome everybody into that process?
Yeah, I like that. I mean, it's a great. I think it's it's good. It's real good.
Yeah, I think if we're getting sixteen and seventeen and eighteen year olds who are engaging in it for the first time, some of their are going to bring along their parents who are engaging in town politics for the first time.
Yeah.
I agree. Tim, did you have any questions with Jessica?
No, I think it's a wonderful idea. I don't know whether it be the annual town meeting or the special town meeting, but I don't know what state the petition is in. So.
Well, I think what we're saying, Jessica, is that we'll see about getting the petition certified. Our our drop dead date. I mean, our warrant is closed, but in our but our drop dead date for like taking out warrant articles or adding in warrant articles is really March twenty eighth. So we'll we'll look and see what the situation is with your petition from our legal advisor, Lisa Mead, and and we'll we'll talk about it and make a decision in the next week or two. Okay?
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. Yeah. If I I'll say we are hoping that if we can get all four Union Thirty Eight towns doing this together, it might be able to recruit a little bit of media interest in the general topic and, you know, get some more attention to our little corner of Southern Franklin County. So if that helps tip the balance of which meeting it might go to. If it's only Sunderland, you know, in Conway, it's not quite as persuasive a story, I think.
Right. Well, I'm I'm sure we're going to be looking at it positively. All of us have positive feelings about it. So.
Lisa, I don't know if you've heard the discussion. Have you seen this in any of your other communities that that you work with? Yeah?
No, thank you, Trevor, and nice to hear you, Carolyn. So I haven't. None of my other communities have, but I have heard about it and certainly taken a look at what is necessary. And as as Jessica indicated, those communities that she indicated, Somerville, Lowell Box and Cambridge, they have passed it on the local level. You might remember, though, also, those are cities. And cities don't have to have their bylaws or ordinances reviewed by the Attorney General. However, this would be a piece of special legislation. Because the only way it can be enacted, as she suggested, is by an act of the legislature. These these young folks wouldn't be called voters. They would be called registrants or preregistrants because they're not of voting age and voters are is a defined term in the state statute under under chapter fifty four or something like that. So there are some communities that have done it for sure, and it does have to be approved by the state legislature. Just as a just as a caution, you would not be able to have any local elections on a state primary or a state or federal election day. So right, because you couldn't you couldn't mix the local stuff with the state or federal activity because it those those voters or preregistrants wouldn't be able to vote in those elections. So there's some discrepancies like that that would have to be worked out, but the way that she described it is absolutely the way that you have to go about it. It would be a basically a request for a home rule petition. And it would have to move off to the legislature. It wouldn't be a local bylaw.
Okay, great. Those are good. Good points to think of. That's great. Cool. Okay. Thank you, Jessica. Really appreciate you.
Thank you for your interest and support. It's great to see all of you.
Thank you. Bye, Jessica.
Take care.
Tim, do you want to give us a quick update on the eighteen eighty-eight building?
Well, I'm presenting presenting to the Community Preservation Committee tonight, the general outline of the application. I have want to suggest that the Select Board approve a slightly different review committee. I've asked Vern Harrington, formerly, well, he's still a contractor, I guess, he's semi-retired. Whether he would serve on it, I've asked a local architect from Shelburne Falls Associates, Joe Joseph Matty to serve as an architect. Spoken with Christopher Dunn about sitting in on this as a planner. And then a Select Board member and a member of the Town Building Advisory Committee to help review. We're we're in the process of looking at going out for another R F Q to find a hopefully find a local architect that can be more responsive to us as a community as we work through the process. My intent is to tell CPC that because we are just finding out about the four million dollar grant and learning about how we have to work with USDA to access the money, that we probably should bring this to the Fall Special Town Meeting. That would have given us an opportunity to have at least one, if not possibly two public hearings before the special town meetings to ask community for input on the conceptual design that comes out of this new process. And then to after after community engagement, come back and have another discussion in anticipation of presenting it at the Fall Meeting.
Sounds like a plan. It definitely will work.
I'm supportive of it. I don't think we need a vote. I think there's consensus, right, Trevor? You feel okay with that?
Sure. Yeah, start engaging.
I feeling I'm fine with that too, Trent, Tim. That way you can stay within the general outlines of what you're talking about without us having a.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And and I really think adding a component of an architect who has no interest in bidding on this project and a contractor who's had, you know, forty plus years of experience would help provide some expertise that I think we might have been lacking in the previous iteration of this project. So, thank you.
Great. Sounds good.
Okay. Casey, I'm sorry because I I was coming back from the town hall. I missed how I I see that Lisa's on the phone. You said she was in traffic. How are we going to handle the warrant review now?
She and I have discussed.
Well, I am actually, I'm actually pulling up to my office. So if you guys can.
Oh, great. Oh, great.
Let me get into my office and turn you on. I'll be with you.
Perfect. Perfect. That's fine. That's fine. I just I just missed the beginning. So, thank you.
Perfect.
All right, I'll be. I will be right back.
So give a quick update while we're waiting. So had a because I I need to also speak tonight to the CPA group about the town common. And we can't reconstituted the committee again last night. Kate Lawless was our chair, and then she had stepped away. It's been a long process and she other things to do and we're we're grateful for her guidance. So we had elected Melissa Hale to chair our committee again, or to chair it this time. And we kind of got together last night to kind of just give them an update of what we've been working on here and how it relates to the common and where we'd like to go. And I need to give us an update to the CPA tonight about, you know, why we haven't done anything yet and what our plan is going forward. And I just thought maybe I'd run it by you guys too and see if we're all on the same page. So when I talk to them, I know that we're we're all thinking the same thing. So we had the meeting and I updated them on a couple of things, the the Leary Lot project that's moving forward and the grants we got for the energy. The the car chargers and all the other infrastructure stuff. And then I kind of updated them on where still, I don't know, I even had an update on how we're paying for either roads or Leary Lot yet.
Don't have an answer.
Okay, so so I mentioned to them that we're not sure which way that's going yet, but one way or the other, we're funding that project and and that. So so there'll be some good infrastructure work going on kind of near the common. I updated them on, and maybe I don't know if I've updated everybody on the D O T meeting yet. Maybe we have. I think we maybe have had a meeting since then. Chris Chris was there. Christopher Dunn was there. And Casey Casey was in on Zoom too at the meeting. So we talked about really, the meeting was about the Mill Village Road and, you know, how to make that safer, that intersection. And then I we, at the end, we talked about, they brought up a program they're working on about trying to make it safer, and they want to remove. They're forcing the removal of the parking spots around Park Street and on Sugarloaf Street. You know, I know the church is parked there, but there just can't be any parking spots painted. And so they're looking at how they paint Sugarloaf Street for bike lanes and traffic calming. And we gave them an update of the common. You know, pathways that we had now, and they're just going to look at that and look at their plans and make sure that those align. Because that's been our major holdup. It's like not wanting to do any pathways on the common and then find out D O T wants them somewhere else. And so I think we're working together and Christopher's kind of shepherding that through to make sure those plans jive together and work together. And then I told them that, you know, we all kind of our consensus was let's do something this spring and get pathways in, benches in, maybe we hold off on the fountain work. Maybe we just do underground, whatever, electrical stuff, conduit work, and then come back to it later. So really, I'm just going to give them an update, CPA, an update on where we're at and that we want to move forward with something this year. Probably wouldn't do a major thing, waiting for D O T to give us some guidance on where things lay out. So want to make sure you guys are still on board with that.
Absolutely, Trevor. I'm fine.
Good. 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 Okay, Lisa's here.
Thank you, Lisa.
Welcome. Thank you for being patient.
No worries.
No worries. We're always thrilled to have you. Okay, so you just want to start at the beginning? Or do you are there anything particularly nasty you want to attack first?
Why don't we just go through it? Can you share your screen, Casey, or or Chris, so we can pull it up?
Yeah, I can. I can do that.
Is there a way that you can share the screen without taking over my whole desktop? Because I have it up on my screen right now, you know, so.
You should be able to with, right? And then.
Yeah, Tim, I think if you hit escape after I take over the screen, it will let you leave the full screen mode and just have that open. Okay.
All right.
Let me get this going.
Okay.
Thank you. There we go.
Okay.
It should load any minute now. I think we're looking at a hold on.
The escape does work.
Excellent.
I'm free.
Yeah.
Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
So I guess to start, there was, I saw there was a comment at the greetings. I don't know if that was just, we just that we didn't want to pass over articles.
Yes, it's just a comment. It's literally just a comment to let everybody know.
Sounds good. Was there a discussion about elected officials' compensation that I saw in an email somewhere?
There was. So there was a change to elected officials' compensation that I didn't catch right away, but it's been corrected. So in the budget, the town moderator increased compensation for special elections.
Oh, two hundred.
So I've corrected it.
That makes sense. Yep, that sounds good. Okay, good. So that's so it's A is the reports, B is compensation, A C C is the acknowledgements and gifts. And then you'll have a tables that you'll put in.
Right. Okay, so there's something I need to do here. Chris, can you give me permission to share something? I have an update and it was based on a conversation I had with Lisa.
Sure.
Hold on. Now I have to escape. I love escape. Escape is smart friend.
But generally, that's just the the table.
Right, and I'm I had sent out an updated copy of this.
So does yours have all the tape or something? Or yeah, not yet. Okay.
Yeah, because I can't screen share what I had talked to Lisa about, which was rearranging the personnel bylaw.
Oh, that's on that's coming later at four, right?
Right. So what you're seeing a version that doesn't have that. That's why I wanted to be able to share my screen because I
Oh.
realized that I had sent it out. I didn't know if I copied Chris. I don't remember.
Casey, can you try sharing your screen? I just made you a co-host, so I'm hoping that works.
There we go. Thank you.
Perfect.
Is the right one?
It works.
Okay, so can you see the where it says Article Four and it's got all this line of comment on the side?
Yes.
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 First section is really the explanation about why we should change the bylaw.
But we haven't gotten to that yet, right? Are we good with one and two? There's nothing else here. Reserve fund, OPAB liability, all that stuff, right?
That's standard. I just have to fill in the numbers.
And can you hit your magnify button?
I can, as soon as I figure out where it is.
It's over in the right bottom.
Better?
Yes.
That's good.
All right, so what what? So Article one and two.
And three are fine.
And three are standard language.
Right.
And they the placement is the same as we've had in past years.
Right. Then you get to four.
Then we get to four. And so the explanation around four is first, this would if this change to the bylaw was accept were to be accepted by town meeting and, you know, by the board to actually place.
Yeah.
This take out the benefits and policies that are in the bylaw, but make a few changes to the bylaw itself that outline a more clear purpose and intent. And then a process by which we could create a manual and how Personnel Board and the Select Board would have authority over making policies for town employees.
Yeah.
And so take a read through it. I actually got this language from counsel, Jane Friedman.
Will this need a hearing at all or?
It will, and I've already got that. I've already talked to Personnel about it. I have a date for that hearing. I have the notice ready. I just have to publish it.
And we can do all that before the meeting.
Yes. And so the the Personnel Board would have a hearing. They're going to have a review meeting on April ninth. They have a hearing on the twenty third. Recommendations would need to be included in the guide. They wouldn't be able to be included in the
Yeah.
warrant because I have quorum issues with Personnel. They only have three members and one member's out of the country for two weeks, so couldn't do it any sooner.
Okay.
But essentially, that's what the language of this article does.
Yep.
Lisa and I spoke earlier, and she suggested, so there's two things that are a factor. The current Personnel bylaw requires us to vote the classification compensation plan at town meeting.
Right.
It has to be approved by the legislative body. This article would make that change. However, because the two are tied together, Lisa suggested we put the Personnel bylaw change ahead of the classification compensation. If it if this article were to be approved, it would allow us it it essentially makes the Select Board the approving group for the class comp.
Right.
By virtue of going through the process to approve that that's outlined here.
Yeah.
But it would mean if it was approved, we would be able to pass over the class comp article, which is the next one, right?
Right.
Yeah, that that's correct. And then if it failed, you'd have the class comp article on here, and then you would vote it. So.
They do. That that makes sense. That makes perfect sense.
And so the other pieces to this, and you're going to get a memo, but the other pieces to this are the Personnel Board wants to have a draft policy available for people to look at if they would like to. What you see in the establishment of Personnel policies in this proposed bylaw is elements of what what would be included in policies. It's not details. It's elements. And the reason you see these major elements is because this is what a policy is supposed to do. It creates a class comp. It creates a centralized record-keeping system. It creates rules and regulations, disciplinary procedures. And it also creates policies like FMLA and stuff. The reason you don't name it is because you give yourself the flexibility to include all those things, but you don't limit yourself.
Right. Yep.
Am I right, Lisa?
Yeah, that I mean, we've had a number of our communities, particularly smaller ones, get rid of the bylaw and do exactly this because it provides more flexibility in the middle of the year, for example, for the Select Board and the Personnel Board to do what they need to do.
Right.
And to be more nimble in dealing with employee matters.
Yep.
So there is one element that I wanted to mention to everybody. In this iteration, there is no allowance to have the town administrator on the Personnel Board. Currently, the town administrator is an ex officio non-voting member. One of the reasons is the town administrator represents management, which is the Select Board. I would propose that we amend this language to include the town administrator because in the composition, there is a major shift here, and that is to allow to provide a place at the table inclusion of a member of the staff that is not the town administrator, but a regular bylaw employee to be a part of this committee by virtue of an election of other town employees, other bylaw employees. And it creates some inclusion. I mean, there's no space at the table right now for employees to bring their concerns or potential questions to Personnel Board.
Right.
This would allow more inclusivity. But in this iteration, it doesn't mention the town administrator. And currently, the town administrator does some of that support, but also represents a perspective from management. And so when I was reviewing it again, I thought we need to allow, we need to put that fifth member in ex officio non-voting, if that's how the board wants to handle it, which is currently how it is.
Yeah.
But I think that needs to be there because the H R representation is key. The town administrator does the majority of the H R with the treasurer.
Yeah.
So suggestion.
Yeah, and and you'll note in here that the employee rep is also ex officio, right? So there's actually three members of the Personnel Board, then one ex officio member as the employee rep. And then, as Casey suggests, she wants to modify this to include the T A.
Would would a quorum of the board be met with, say, two members and an ex officio or something like, it gives them more flexibility. They could still meet and talk. But one, obviously, to vote, you'd need.
The quorum would be the the three. If the if the three members are the actual board.
I see.
Yeah.
I didn't. I wondered how.
So that are, so that's one other element to take into account. Currently, Lisa, we have a five-member personnel board.
Yeah.
We've been unable to fill two vacancies, so it forces us to push business off if we can't get a bit a meeting.
Yeah.
Is there a way that we could allow for quorum? Because I hear what you're saying. But for purposes of voting, if you had two members of the voting group plus one member of a the ex officio member, does that allow them to take action?
Well, I I guess so the answer is we, so first of all, we can add it to say that for the purposes of obtaining a quorum to meet, you can use the ex officio members. But then if you only have two, if you have two, just just play this out. If you only have two members, yes, two members could pass on something. But if it's a one-to-one vote, then a tie vote fails, right? So the answer is yes, you can do that. We could just draft it in here to be clear about what what it takes to have a meeting.
Okay, that would be good because I that's sort of the issue they're running into now, but that's because of composition and the lack of seat, people sitting in those seats.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So would the board consider adding the town administrator as an ex officio non-voting member?
I I think so. I mean, you have to be. There's so much that goes on that you work with intimately.
I'm I'm fine with it too, because how how can you not be really?
Yep, Tim.
So, yeah, just just a plea to keep an eye on the screen for all the people who are not in the room. Yeah, I think clarifying what constitutes a quorum, if you have a three-member board, two people is a quorum.
Right.
I think all the things you suggested, Lisa, are good, right? And
Yeah.
Even if you have two ex officios and you have one member, are we thinking we're going to allow that to be a meeting? It doesn't really sound like it should be, but.
No.
Well, they could have a meeting, but they can't. They can't take any action.
Right.
They they could have a meeting if they needed to, but they can't take any action. So really.
Spell out. Yeah, needed.
Would it make more sense to add another to add a member?
Well, I I mean, I think you could you could draft around what Tim is saying. So you could say that a quorum has to be at least two of the members and can also be one, but you're still at two, right? So I I I think you have to just, you can either have the quorum be the three members, and that means two can meet to meet, right? You can have two and have a meeting. You can have two and have a meeting, notwithstanding your ex officio. So if only three members show up and they're the three members of the Personnel Board, excuse me, if only two members show up and they're the two members of that vote, then those two members can vote, right? Um, and so that's how the quorum could be decided.
Yeah.
If you wanna have five, I mean, in either case, you don't necessarily need the non-voting members because you always need at least three or in a five-member board and at least two in a two-member board to vote.
Okay.
Right.
I just wanted to, now, now that I'm looking at it, I just wanted to make sure I was not missing the vote on something. Um.
All right.
Yeah, and a larger board just runs the risk of, you know, running into quorum issues. When you have two voting members out of three, you can act. When you have two voting, voting members out of five, you can't do anything. And if the tie, if it is a tie situation, it's gotta be brought up in another meeting before you can take action.
Yeah.
Right, and so we've run into enough quorum issues and not being able to vote lately that I just, that's why it comes up as I'm thinking about.
So we bring it down.
Yeah, I think it's a good point, Casey, but I think by bringing it down to three and having that be what's necessary, a majority of the three to quorum to meet, you, you cover that problem.
Right.
So if we address that, that would be helpful.
Okay, I can, I can draft that.
Okay. Um.
The comp plan.
And so the comp plan is our standard language.
Yeah.
Um.
And we're still.
So we're still in flux because of the budget.
Right, we haven't voted.
So I wouldn't put the table in at this point.
Okay.
I would take that out.
All right.
Um, so then we get, that was Article five. Article six is, it, so here we are, Lisa, at our, our conundrum about what's gonna be our funding source for the roads and what's gonna be our funding source for the leary lot. This first article is to transfer from a stabilization fund or otherwise provide, um, what's left to fund, to fin, to pay for the repairs to the roads.
Yeah.
Not that number yet because we're still going through budget process. So I would put a sum, I, I wanted to be able to put an amount in.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll have that amount by the twenty-eighth. I'm not, or later on in the process, but right now I don't have it.
So there's a couple of things you can do here. You could, you could make this article even more, uh, general, right? You could say to see if the town will vote to, um, appropriate transfer or otherwise provide.
Yep.
Funds, right? To, uh, you know, of an amount, you could say whatever amount you think, and that can always change in the motion, to fund extraordinary road and sidewalk reconstruction repairs, right?
Yeah.
And then your motion will be vote to transfer from whatever you decide and then the exact amount.
Okay.
But we would still need the two-thirds vote from stabilization though, right? If it comes from stabilization, you will definitely need the two-thirds.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I understand that. That's, actually, that sounds really good. That's a.
And, and my, my concern, I guess my concern on all this is getting that answer about the leary lot funding using ARPA versus stabilization because, um, I, I don't, I don't know if Lisa was aware of that yet or not. We're, we're trying to fund the leary lot project with the ARPA funds, but if we can't use it to match the federal grant, um, then we were gonna use the stabilization to pay for that and then use our ARPA to pay for the road repair.
Yeah, your ARPA funds you have to have under contract before the end of the year, right? You know that.
So we thought we, we could use that to pay the road repair and that way that's just done. And then we could, we could, um, we could use the general stabilization to do the leary lot. I just didn't wanna vote the, you know, we go ahead and vote the roads, they're all paid off, and then the town goes, yeah, we're not gonna do the leary lot now, we're, you know? So I just want a guarantee that we're gonna get them funding, you know, if we're gonna pay the roads with the ARPA, then we need to, we need to move that leary lot funding for general stabilization for like that, the, one of those has to go first so that we don't wind up paying for the roads with ARPA and having no money to do the leary lot.
So, so this article can be, you know, I mean, obviously whichever you wanna do first, but I think you can make it general enough to give you flexibility.
Okay.
For, um, whatever you decide before town meeting for the motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what exactly, just to clarify, does under contract in the ARPA context mean?
It means under contract. It means you have to, you have to have the funds obligated. Um.
I'm sorry to be obtuse, but when you say obligated, we've decided we're gonna spend ARPA on the eighteen eighty-eight building, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Is that obligated?
No.
Okay, what?
It's construction contract, inside.
Have a construction contract.
Yeah.
Or if you're, you know, or other, some other, whatever is gonna cost seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, right? So it, you need to have a contract signed. So if it's a construction contract, you need to have the construction contract signed. Well, we, we could, Tim, we could have a design, um, fee. We could use it towards a design fee or something like that.
I don't, I, yeah, that's fine. I don't, don't wanna, um, hold up the meeting. We can discover, discover what we're gonna do going forward. So, okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just, I guess then just to clarify, um, since we've already had all of this major work, uh, on the roads, we could, because we, we turned the ARPA into, um, forget what the term was, um.
We took, we.
Revenue replacement.
Thank you, revenue replacement. We could then just straight pay those bills that we have, we have done, uh, that we, you know, had all that work done by all our subcontractors. We could just pay that bill. Okay, great. And, and that's on contract and that's, okay, that's a little more secure. It feels like that's the safer way to go for that portion of the ARPA and then, uh, have general stabilization pay for the leary lot, um, you know, just switching how, what buckets of money they get pulled from. I just wanna make one, make sure the leary lot's secure before we go and spend it on the, the other item.
And so Lisa, we haven't been able to get an answer from the feds about whether you can use ARPA funds since they are a federal funding source towards this federal grant that we got as a match.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I, I don't know. You're gonna, yeah, you have to go to that fund administrator to talk about that.
Because it feel like it's, you know, we turned it into revenue replacement, but it, they still kind of, you know, are using, you, it doesn't wash it out completely, right?
Yeah, I, I think you're gonna have to talk to the feds about that, whoever the program administrator is.
And try and.
I have a webinar tomorrow, um, that I'm hoping will resolve in an answer to that question. Otherwise, um, I'm also, I've been working with our town accountant, Brenda Hill, at a trying to find an answer for that. And she was in touch with our auditor, Tom Scanlon, to see if he had a, a, a good solution um, in mind because she thinks he would be expert in what can and can't be done with ARPA.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Tim has his hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, um, and I'm not gonna name names on this, but if, um, a building project came through with a large uh, building permit fee, um, would we need to have language in this warrant to expend it for the roads or, or it's just a general fund that we can draw from or?
Right, those are local receipts, so those are considered part of your general fund.
Right.
Okay.
And we wouldn't do those until after free cash was certified.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
September.
In September, yeah.
Okay.
So, Article seven.
Yep.
Rescind, it was asked to put a rescission vote on for the borrowing authority for the road re, reconstruction and repair. So that's that article.
That's good. And right, we wanted the, to sort out the road, uh, repair, uh.
Payable.
Payable with stabilization funds and make sure that's all got between leary lot, road work is all sorted out before we rescind this borrowing authority.
Right.
We just, again, didn't wanna get caught flat-footed.
Is, so is this the one that failed?
Oh, it failed and then it passed. So it was a second vote we had, Lisa, or, or later on, and it passed. So we do.
Right.
Borrowing authority for five million, but we think we've peeled together enough money that we don't need to borrow.
Wait, so can I just ask a question?
Um.
Why would you rescind it now before you do the work?
Well, most of the work is done.
Lisa, everything that's emergency work is gonna be pretty much done by the end of the month.
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, I mean, everything that's remaining is going to be done, uh, through long-term grants and other opportunity funding. Because they're not roads that are highly used. And we're trying to, and except for River Road, but River Road, we're gonna, um, do probably end up breaking into three mass works projects, separate projects.
Okay.
But that's after we figure out what we're gonna do on that road. It's stable for now. The repairs we did have stabilized it.
And it was also to build some general goodwill with the public because we said, look, if we can piece together enough help from the state and other things, we promised that we will not borrow if we don't have to. And so we wanted to kind of honor that as soon as we could.
Yep.
So just to be, um, get Lisa's advice, uh, she may not have any on this. What would be the harm, just playing devil's advocate of delaying this till the special town meeting uh, in the fall when it's totally clear we don't need to borrow money?
Uh, because I don't think we do, Tim, but.
Well, yeah, I'm just asking a question of Lisa.
Well, there's no harm, but I, I mean, I didn't understand the, the, you know, kind of the representations that were made to the
Yeah.
to the community, right? So the, the goodwill is a, is a big deal, um, which is. So that's why I, that's why I asked the question. So I didn't understand that because there is no harm in delaying. And I mean, sometimes people don't rescind borrowing authority for years after a project is done, right? But, um, but you've got, I mean, you know, you asked for a lot of money and you made some representations about it, so that there's nothing hard, you know, you should do that.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
So to Trevor's point earlier, do we wanna put the leary lot ahead of the roads?
I think so, because, yeah, I would bump, bump the, like, just flip-flop those two, just so that we knew leary lot was paid for.
Then we deal with the roads, then we deal with the article.
Yeah, just so that everything kind of is, is laid out, everyone feels comfortable where the money's coming from and we, everything's paid for and then we can go, okay, everything's all set, let's rescind.
Yep. I, I agree on that totally.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I have that right. All right.
Sounds.
Because that was.
I, I don't want the leary lot to be held up because we don't have the ability to borrow, to move stabilization and all that kinda stuff.
Right.
Okay.
I think we can make it clear.
And what about the idea of, this still seems like it's too high up in the list of things. I know it's, there's an argument about it's fiscal year twenty-four and all that stuff. It seems like this is the thing that's gonna be keeping people in their seats. I'm just asking why it's so high up.
The, uh.
We can.
The road stuff.
Uh, I would move, if we're gonna move it to the end, why don't we move all the
Yeah, it all have to.
Quote-unquote fiscal year twenty-four bills to the end.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't really think that it matters, but if that's the way you like to organize it.
Yeah.
I would be in favor of this being the last thing on, so we end on a high note. Everybody goes out of there realizing we just rescinded five million dollars in borrowing. Aren't we fiscally responsible?
We can make that the last article. I'm okay with that. I.
No, I realize that, but it just seems, you know, a lot of people are gonna leave after that.
I know.
Then, so why don't we do this? Why don't we move all this, this section?
Right.
Move that to the end, make the borrowing rescission the last article. And then stack it with, stack above it with the roads payment, the leary lot, and then these, these old bills and the snow and ice above the, the, those last, that last chunk that we just talked about. And then we deal with the FY twenty-four, we just do it at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, that.
Does that work?
It's fine with me. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I've, I've got ten minutes left before I have to jump off, so let's move through.
Harson.
Yeah. I think that actually sounds like a good idea.
Cause I would put the smaller bills first, Tim, and then the leary lot, the road payment, and then the borrowing rescission.
I, I, and, and for me, I feel like those, like the snow and ice and any previous bills could just get put up at the front. They don't need to wait until the end, but.
Okay, so you wanna leave those at the front, but move the
I think so.
Big chunk of payables towards the end.
Yes. Yep.
All right.
Cause that's what we normally do is we pay off that stuff. We get to the omnibus budget, do all that stuff, and then we get to the, get to these bigger articles. I think that makes sense.
Okay. I just wanna write myself a note so I don't forget. Okay, so to that point, we have the snow and ice, which is currently Article nine.
Sort of.
We have, I actually have the amount for the sewer, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four sewer bill, so I was gonna put that in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, let's see.
This is a.
Shoot, there's one missing. Oh, that's why. I need, I was gonna ask the board if they would open the warrant to add another old bill that we found. And that's the bill for, um, the ever-source publishing for poll hearings.
Right, that's fine. Yeah, you could stick that with the.
Cause I would put that in right around this old, I would probably put it right by.
With the wastewater.
With the wastewater bill.
Yeah, that's.
And so I would, I'll leave those up towards the top of the warrant.
Yep.
Okay.
Casey, you can make it one article.
Okay.
You could just make it one article and say, um, to pay the following unanticipated bills from prior year.
Okay, and we would do it as a consent, right?
Uh, no, I wouldn't do that as a, like, you could just do one article with both bills, that's all.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, that needs four fifths, so don't, yeah, it would complicate it. So just, you, I don't have a problem putting it together, but keep it as a separate warrant article. Yeah.
Wait, what?
But what Carolyn's saying is fine. Put both of them in, um, in one article, um, because it's four fifths, but don't put it up with the consent articles.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. And eleven is the, uh, transfer from free cash.
Okay, so eleven is, now that we have a decision from the legislature and A and F that we can put our opioid funds in a special fund.
Yeah.
This, we had allowed that money because we didn't know what was gonna happen. We allowed that money to roll into free cash. We now have to take it out and put it in that special fund. Lisa, my question about this is, do we have to, I put it in here, but do we have to notify the public about the special fund and how it was created? Cause that's the language that I put in here.
Um, you have to say that it's gonna be spent for, uh, to see if the town will vote to transfer.
I did say what it would be spent for.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would leave it just like this.
Okay.
That's good.
All right, so the next one is the general fund bud, or the omnibus budget.
Twelve is omnibus.
Thirteen is sewer enterprise fund.
Yeah.
Fourteen is SCAMS.
Yeah.
And this is all the same structure we've used in the past.
Right.
Um, fifteen is, now, here's where we get, okay. So, we have this question. And it, it may be that we have to add something here, Lisa. We have this question. And I was thinking we could do this in one article, but I'm not sure. We had an FY twenty, we had two FY twenty-four requests from SCAMS to reallocate funds that were approved in prior fiscal, that were approved. Reallocate them toward different projects, but in this fiscal year. Do we need to have a separate article for that? It would be capital funds. So normally we do capital all at once, but I didn't know if we could combine the FY twenty-four with the current capital article. Which is a little further now.
Um. So, so is it, is it the next one that the capital one is the?
Well, um, no, actually, capital is, where is the capital?
Well, I, I think that, so they wanna reallocate money that was previously allocated in, I, I think you have to call that out.
Okay.
So that'd be its own article.
Yeah.
Is this, is fifteen the capital plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And so if it was gonna be a separate SCAMS article, I would put it after the SCAMS budget line, which is Article fourteen right now.
Yeah.
We need fourteen and fifteen. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and so fifteen is capital.
Yeah.
Sixteen is community preservation fund budgets. And Carolyn, I've talked to Kathy Sylvester a couple of times in the last couple days. And they haven't made a decision on any of their projects. So I realize the board is loathe to pass over articles, but in this case, I think we have to leave it there. Because if we take it out and they haven't made a decision by the twenty-eighth, it only forces us to have a special and vote anything later.
What, what I told, no, what I, what I told Kathy is that, um, move ahead with their app, they have one application.
Make a decision, if if it's not a clear decision, have their public hearing, and then we would figure out what we want to do. Um, after their public hearing, because I think their public hearing is the twenty-seventh, right?
I don't, I know they have a meeting the twenty-seventh. I didn't know whether it was a public hearing.
All right, well, I I just leave it in right now, see if the application is moving forward or not. If it is moving forward, then, you know, we'll make a decision just to leave it.
Are we just saying that there's um.
I don't.
There's not.
They might not have anything.
Oh, okay, other than just putting it where it needs to go.
Right, and so i- if, cause I told Kathy the drop dead date was the March twenty-eighth and that we could. Pull it out, if there was no, if there was no CPC, we could just pull it out and.
Well, they still have to, I mean, you still have.
Yeah.
Dividing it, right?
Yeah, I guess we have to leave it here, I mean.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's right, that is.
They've gotta have the ten percent allocations and then they've gotta have, so there will be some CPC activity, it's just whether there'll be a project or not.
Correct.
Correct, that's right.
You're right, you're right. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I just didn't want a whole bunch of articles that we're gonna pass over, that's all. It just doesn't look good.
Um, all right, so.
Oh, you're talking.
Article seventeen is the quarterly tax payment system. Effective July first twenty twenty-five, which is FY twenty-six, so it gives over a year to notify the public.
Okay.
And I want everybody to know that we're all working to make sure that we've got information to provide the public. That you guys could speak to at town meeting, that we can include in the the warrant, or in the guide.
Yeah.
But we also will have to develop a. A plan to message this out to the community. I know people are concerned about.
Any hearing that needs to happen or anything like that?
Ask Lisa.
No.
No, it's just a decision made, but.
Yep, it's just a decision to be made, and I I was surprised to know that you guys weren't on quarterly. Billings.
You weren't on quarterly or?
Uh, most everybody I know is on quarterly, because it's just a much better thing for cash flow.
Definitely better for cash flow, for sure. It's been, it was a hard year this year, for sure, with everything that happened.
And with so many low, and now that we have loans that have different pay, different periods, we've gotta have consistent cash flow.
So it also, it's better for your bond rating too, you guys.
Yep, I'm sorry, I keep kicking this box into the table.
Okay. So that was Article seventeen, and does the board have any preference about where you want to see this? Is it?
No.
Is it okay in this?
Yep.
Area?
Works good.
Okay. Article, what's now Article eighteen is the request to approve the Board of Trustees filing a petition. With probate and family court, seeking certain modifications to the charitable trust.
Yep, that's fine.
Are there any other changes to the language we need to think about, Lisa? I know we don't.
Does this incorporate the changes that I made, Casey?
I believe so, but I'll go back and check. I think that's what I took, was I took your changes, but I'll go back and check and make sure.
Yeah, if if it includes our cha- my changes, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Um, so Article nineteen is the CIPC bylaw change, and this is still kind of up in the air. There's, the placeholder is still here and there's an explanation. There's two issues that CIP, uh, Capital Improvement Planning Committee has run into. One is they're having quorum issues, so they've got two appointments that are not filled. Because the appointing authority can't find anybody to sit, that's willing to sit. So the other thing is, so that means quorum is affected. Um, the other issue is the deadline to turn in capital requests.
Right.
And I did a little bit of research just to see what the statute said on.
Yeah, we changed it a few years back.
Yeah, we changed the deadline, we changed some of the mechanics of doing of the process. But the quorum issue is is a big deal, because the first meeting capital had in February, they couldn't do any business because they didn't have quorum.
Right.
So, I mean, they could talk about things, but they couldn't make any decisions, so. I had, the reason I'm explaining this a bit is because I'm wondering if there's language we could put in the art, in the uh bylaw, Lisa. That would specify what quorum looks like if there's a vacancy.
Yeah, of course, we can, um, well, only in the turn, only in the event there, yeah, it, I mean, you could copy essentially what. Um, the Wetlands Protection Act Regulations provides for the Conservation Commission, right? So uh, that says that, um, if, let's say there's seven members. But um, so there has to be at least a quorum of people meet, so four people have to meet. But um, in order to pass anything, it can then be a majority of those four.
Okay, that's what I was hoping, because I see an example in O M L about how you could deal with this. If you have specificity about what quorum means in the event that there aren't people sitting at the table.
Yeah, so that's about as close as we can get, the most flexible that you can get. You always have to have a quorum of the body. Right, to have a meeting.
Right.
Um, but that doesn't mean you need that same quorum to pass things, then you can say, okay, of that quorum. A majority is necessary to pass something.
Okay.
To CIPC, seven members or is it five members or?
Seven.
Seven.
Is seven a good number? We always have trouble with seven and nine member boards.
Yeah.
Well, two of them are filled by the moderator. The committees have all. All five of the committees have have members that are active.
So it's.
So we have one from school committee, one from planning board, one from the select board, um.
One from finance.
Finance.
And one from assessors.
Right, and then two moderator appointments.
So with all those town officials, why are we having trouble getting quarums?
Because if someone can't attend, because the quorum is is based on the number of seats. Or the number of appointees.
Right.
We didn't have enough at that first meeting, um, because people were out of town, and it it ha- it's been an issue in the past, so.
Well, that's why I was asking seven versus five, I mean.
That was, brought it up. It doesn't have to be addressed, um. It's just, if we were able to use some language similar to what, like Lisa says, the Wetlands Protection Act. It does give them some flexibility if they, because there are requirements. In order to do capital, that if we don't have quorum and they can't make a decision.
Yeah.
We're not following the bylaw, Tim, and so.
Right, no, that's fine. I I would raise the point about large boards lead to quorum problems.
Yes.
And if one of the solutions is to make it five instead of seven, maybe that's something we should consider, but.
Okay.
I don't have strong feelings about it. I don't even have strong feelings about whether this needs on, to be on this eight annual town meeting warrant, or it couldn't be pushed to the fall, but.
Okay, so you guys need to tell me whether you want to push it or not. I have a meeting with CIPC tomorrow.
Fall is fine too, it's just, I think the, really the issue is the deadlines, because we have no idea what our budget looks like or anything like that, and then all of a sudden. You know.
So that was my second.
Applications are in, I mean, and that, that, we could do all this in the fall. I mean, does that make sense? It gives us a little bit of time.
I would prefer it in the fall, because what we need to do is think about it on, from a practical point of view. What things have happened, how things come in, and I don't want to rush this, because it is a, it is a whole change. And I have, you know, been on the CIPC since the very beginning and was part of how we established the committee, and we have made a couple changes. To make it more practical, but I don't like to rush stuff, so I would like to put this off and. Myself would like to put this off until the fall, where we have more time, work on it.
We don't have to have a motion, we can just have consensus to take it out.
Yes.
Okay, I just put it in there. All right, so what's now Article twenty is the vote to, or is the request to amend. The Community Preservation Committee. And this is based on language that's noted bold and underlined, and deletions are noted and strike through. Language that was developed by council, working, you know, amongst, you know, Kathy, myself, talking to Lisa and Matt Proventure. And trying to come up with an answer that allows us to have someone sitting on the committee CPC. That's interested in promoting affordable housing in town, because the statute does not allow us, because we don't have a local housing authority. Our only other option is the regional housing authority, and there's no representation from them. So it leaves us not only with a quorum issue, but it leaves us with a, with the inability to promote affordable housing. You know, and have a resident actually sit on the committee to be a part of that. So Lisa and I had a conversation earlier, because I had talked to, I sent Kathy a copy of this language, and she got back to me. And. What she asked me was whether we could remove the language that says. Who doesn't currently hold elected or appointed office? And so I posed that question to Lisa earlier, because if you look through even the current bylaw, the appointees. On the committee are all either elected or appointed officials.
Yeah, so um, Casey, I talked to Matt about this. Um, I think the answer is yes, um, we can remove that language that requires that, that says they can't hold a current elected or appointed office. What we tried to do here, because we're kind of fiddling with the statute, is take something that the Attorney General has already approved. Um, and she, and the Attorney General has already approved this type of change in another community. Um, I'm pretty comfortable with taking out the language um, related to appointed or having to be. Not elected or appointed be- because of the reason that Casey just said.
So that's actually Lisa's reason, I was just parroting it.
Okay.
So we could remove all the way to not currently serves as a municipal employee?
You can say one resident of the town who um.
Is interested in promoting.
Correct.
Yeah.
So even the nor currently serves, okay, I could take that.
Okay, I support that.
Yep.
Okay, so I could make that change and Lisa will check and make sure I get it right.
Great. Twenty-one is the property at, for the Alice property for sale, it's.
Okay, so this is the land, just so Lisa knows, this is the barn.
Yeah, yeah, I saw the email traffic on it, for sure.
This is the barn. I tried to do the best I could to write up, write the language based on, you know, what Lisa's given me before.
Yeah.
Um, I did confirm the map and lot. Do we need a registry deed reference, Lisa?
No, you don't, yeah, we just give notice to people about where it is and the map and lot does that.
All right, and I think that needs a two-thirds majority, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then the other, the article, what's now Article twenty-two is the vote to authorize the select board to sell, convey, or otherwise dispose of the parcel. That is the old Saint James property. Now, this wouldn't, I'm sure this wouldn't happen right away. But we need to be able to convey the property to a land developer, so they can develop the senior housing on that property. And so Lisa crafted this language for us.
So that's fine, so we're gonna, we're gonna hold, or we're gonna do?
No, I think you need to, this, in order for that, for senior housing to move ahead. In the next several months, they need the ability to sa- to convey the property to the developer, because.
Oh, wait, I thought twenty-two was, oh, was twenty-three, I was reading the note about DOT and still.
Oh, no, it, the notes below that, it's, it's, this is the article that's right after the new proling.
Oh, and then so twenty, there would be, note would have went with twenty-three or something.
Right, there would be note twenty-three or twenty-four, I removed them.
Got him, okay.
And Lisa and I talked about that as well.
Yep.
There's a whole notification process we're gonna need to go through, but right now, so just to to. Follow up on his question about the DOT R O W thing for Stillwater. The plans are not approved, and I explained that to Lisa earlier. They could be approved in the next several days, but there's no guarantee, and so. What DOT had said to me, because there was some uncertainty about putting this on. If we didn't have certain things in place and we hadn't had notify, the notification process for the property owners.
Yeah.
So if we wait and do this at the fall town meeting, it still meets the deadline or the timeline that DOT has. But it also gives us that time to do all the notifications and the, you know, the.
Yes, thank you, because I, it would be horrible to have this defeated at town meeting, that's a horrible.
Question about this land transfer of two point one acres, if we don't own it yet, should we actually be doing this yet?
Oh, you're funny, Tim, I just had that conversation with my colleague, Joe Rotello, who's been working on this with Casey. We just had this at our real estate meeting yesterday, so the answer is, um, you can, you can do it for sure. I think somebody might ask that question, like, what's holding this up? Why don't we own it yet? I mean, obviously, if town meeting authorizes you to sell it, but you never own it, then you never can sell it, right? So it's not, there's no harm in doing it. I think it would be a better, I think it would be better if the closing were gonna take place before town meeting, but I don't know that to be the case. I know Joe's working on it, um, but I I actually, it's very funny that you said that, because this is exactly the conversation we had yesterday, so.
And it's, it's, it's one of those things where there are several things on here that are contentious, and. I would prefer to not have a bunch of contentious stuff. I I I personally think this could be kicked to the fall, but. Just for that reason, because we don't own it.
What's the, so what's the, um, Casey, what's the planning process for um, the senior housing? I mean, they're, they're gonna have to go, they're gonna have to get, you know, do a feasibility study or do some preliminary, um. You know, they're gonna have to go out to bid and all of that, so what's the likelihood that that's gonna happen before October or November?
They were working on it, I think they wanted to be able to put the RFP out uh, before the summer. But I don't actually know the timeline. Carolyn, what's the timeline?
Well, um, we don't have a design yet, uh, committed, so the RFP isn't gonna go out until we have a, some kind of design. And I don't think we're gonna have a design ready for a few months, because, you know, we want to talk about, you know, different. Creative ways to make sure we have as many units as possible, so I, I mean, I think kicking it off to the fall is probably okay.
Okay.
Let's do that.
All right.
So I mean, if, if by some miracle, they get a design and they want to do an RFP before the fall. You just make the RFP contingent upon the sale of town, I mean, contingent upon approval of town meeting.
Yep.
And I feel by then we'll have, again, more success, because, you know, we'll have, obviously, we'll have a design that went into the RFP, so.
Yeah.
I mean, then people will support it because we're moving forward.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll take this one out.
My last comment is the um, the Deerfield Spirit Shop. Last I talked to him, he was fine with us.
It was the manager.
Who was the manager?
The manager said they didn't want it on there, this, after we did it again.
Not only.
Yep, it doesn't matter. We were told we shouldn't put our, I don't care what Steve says, when we're told repeatedly. By the manager, they don't want to have our stuff out there, then we have to find another way to put it out. We're still complying with the bylaw. It's four places plus the town hall. Um, I, I.
Any sense.
It's, it's Cassie and the constables that keep running into it, and it's really the constable. So Lisa, just for reference, I took Spirit Shop out of here. Because it was a poll, it was a posting place for the warrant and the elections warrants. But we got a lot of pushback from the manager when the constables were trying to put the last special election warrant up.
And then I called the owner of the business, and he said, no, I'm happy to have it up there, love to have it up, sounds great.
But.
Well, he, I mean, the owner may be saying that, but if the guy that's in charge is not letting it happen, that's a problem unless the owner gives him an edict, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, they must not be communicating, because the own, the owner of the business was like, yeah, go ahead, that's fine.
Yeah. You better, better safe than sorry, because you don't want somebody taking it down, so I think Casey's plan to put it someplace else is a good idea.
Yeah, I have to bounce off this meeting, but I wanted to thank Lisa for.
I do too, but.
Being here by car and phone and office.
That's my pleasure.
Dedicated, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Yep, see you in a bit.
Thank you, Trevor, and thank you, Lisa.
Um, so yeah, I just corrected it, so we have to have it in four places plus the town hall.
So you have four.
The library, the old Deerfield Post Office, South Deerfield Post Office, the Deerfield Convenience Store, and the Deerfield Town Office.
All right, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
And so I will make these changes and send this out, because I know Dan's gonna want to look at this and meet with you. He may want to sit down and meet with you guys at an upcoming meeting. Um, Lisa, I did have a chance to talk to him about the CPC article, so he's better informed on it.
Okay.
He may have other questions, especially if, you know, the three of us meet with Cassie to talk about mechanics of the warrant.
Yeah.
That could be a place to, to sort of further share information, but. I, I got ten minutes of his time and tried to explain everything.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So I have some notes, I may have to touch base with Chris, make sure I didn't forget anything, but thank you, everybody for coming, I really appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Yeah, it's awesome. Great to see everybody.
So make, thank you, see you soon, I'll make.
All right, goodbye.
You adjourn if you, unless you have anything else, Carolyn?
No, no, I'm fine. Thank you, Trevor, and um, Lisa, thank you so much.
Yep.
My pleasure.
Chris, thank you for being here too.
All those in favor?
I, I, Carolyn.
Trevor McDaniel, thank you all.